Okay, we're gonna get started at 6 o'clock. I'm just gonna say hello to those of you that are worshiping on... We're not worshiping this evening, well, I guess we kind of are a little bit, but those that are online with us, hello. You've come to the town hall meeting at least our... Two? This might be interesting. We need a corded mic. Want me to go back to five? He's like, "No, just keep going." We're gonna give him gray hair by the time we're done. But what a beautiful day we had. Are there any Bills fans out there? Yeah, Louise is wearing a shirt that says Crucial Catch. And if you watch the game, you know the significance of that shirt, although that's not why she wore it, I don't think. But anyway, I'm Pastor Joe. Let's open up with a word of prayer and then we'll get started. Holy God, thank you for the opportunity to come together in this space. Lord, as we talk, would your Holy Spirit begin the process of discernment? Would you reveal yourself to us and your plans to us? And God, would you be glorified in what is shared this evening? In your name we pray, Jesus. Amen. Okay, so I'll kinda give you a format for what I'm thinking. I'm gonna kinda give you a little bit of history. I'm gonna give you a little testimony. And then what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna walk through every question that I've received so far. So I got... Not coming, there it is. Should I switch microphones? We're... okay. How about five? Let's try this one. Oh, this is Brandon's, of course it works. This is hilarious. I'm gonna go through each of the questions. New batteries, he says. Give us new batteries. Hold on. Anyway, I'm gonna through each of the questions that was asked and then at the end of our time together, I'll field whatever questions I might have covered in our time together that you might have. But I thought a little bit of kinda how we got to here. And one of the questions that was asked had to do with, "Have we heard about this before?" This may seem like it's new to you, but as churches, we've been... In the United Methodist Church for quite some time. You know what? Let's try my microphone.
Last year, we began the process of formally kinda talking about what disaffiliation, if that was gonna be even a thing, or how we as a church were gonna respond to some of the issues that we saw kinda taking place. And the first time I shared this from a public format was on May... sorry, on September 5th last year here at Bemis Point in my cup of joe. And we talked about disaffiliation information and that there would be some more information coming as we found out more news. And then this last year, on May 1st of this year actually, I shared that the leadership team had unanimously come to the decision that we felt disaffiliation was the right move for us as a church, but we wanted to enter into a process of discernment with the body. Now, for Park Church, because some of you are gathering from Park Church, those conversations happened around the same time. It was October of last year that we first started really kinda talking about it, although there's been a lot of conversation for several years about the tension inside of the United Methodist Church. And then on March 26th of this year, I shared that we had had this conversation as a leadership team and the leadership team really felt that now was the time for us to consider disaffiliation. And that they were unanimous in their approach to that. If you're not familiar with the structures of the church, just briefly, we have gone from having several different committees or teams to one leadership team. And that leadership team consists of 11 persons here at Bemis and 11 actually at Park Church also. That are the trustees, the finance team, the SPRC. It's the administrative team of the church. They're the governing body. They function as the administrative board for both churches. And just a brief recap from what I shared on May 1st. I recommended that we wait on disaffiliation due to simply the cost of disaffiliation and that we needed to see what the conference was doing. So we didn't have a whole lot of information. We just know that all of a sudden, the United Methodist Church said, "Now seems to be the time where we're gonna really experience the fracturing." It was also coinciding with the time when they canceled General Conference. So we were supposed to have General Conference and they canceled General Conference again. The Global Methodist Church launched on May 1st and we as a church said, "Well, we've gotta start having some of these conversations." And they started to give churches the cost for disaffiliation. If you remember, our initial number from the conference, it's actually from the denomination funneled down through the conference. For Bemis Point was just over $450,000 and for Park Church, it was just over $225,000. Now, those numbers are made up of three primary things. The first is the unfunded pension liability. That's the monies that we pay to clergy persons who are currently... Almost all of them are currently retired. They're drawing funds from the pre-82 pension plan, defined benefit pension plan. And we have a responsibility to them to make sure that they can enjoy retirement for their service. I mean, we committed to that on the front end. The other thing that the churches are being asked to share is the shared ministries, 12 months' worth of shared ministries. And that's all spelled out in the discipline, actually. And the Book of Discipline governs the United Methodist Church. For us, it's paragraph 2553. So if you'd like to look that up, it'll list all of the things that the shells, that the conference shall cover these costs, the local church shall cover these costs. It's unfunded pension liability and then 12 months of ministry shares. And any past 12 months' worth of ministry shares as well. Does that make sense? So if we're in arrears, then we have to become current plus an additional 12 months. And if you read the Book of Discipline, right now, it reads that if you find tension internally, basically, if you find that you're struggling with how the United Methodist Church is processing or struggle with the language in the Book of Discipline, then you can disaffiliate or at least apply for disaffiliation. And our church leadership teams decided in August that now is the time for us to apply. So that's exactly what we did formally. Just after we had shared the news a couple of weeks ago that we were entering into this process, both churches said to the conference, "Hey, we are indeed applying for disaffiliation." That doesn't mean the churches are disaffiliating. What it means is that we're telling the conference, "Hey, we're serious about this." And the conference is saying, "Okay, enter into a season of discernment and then come back to us in a couple of months and let us know what the churches have determined." Does that make sense? So I had recommended that we wait based on the cost. And I shared that I'm not going anywhere. My hope as your pastor, and I know that Brandon and Tom have both shared this also, our hope is to shepherd you guys and to continue to walk in the leadership role that we have right now as long as we can. We're not packing our bags and leaving. We wanna walk with the churches. We believe that this is where God has us right now. And the leadership teams have both said, "Well, we kinda like you guys too. Let's keep you around for a little bit longer, at least another 12-month contract." And so with that being said, a lot shifted in August. And the first reason for why I said we should wait was based on cost. That changed significantly. Now, the unfunded pension liability is calculated based on the bond market. And as you know, in August and September, our bond market did some really crazy stuff. While the stock market was diving, the bond market became very stable. As interest rates went up, our unfunded pension liability actually significantly reduced by 38%, actually. So the calculation to date for Bemis Point is $306,000 and for Park Church is $163,000. That includes $5,000 for each church for the attorney fees on the conference side. Does that make sense? Now, the local church would have fees for their attorney as well. But the conference-side attorneys is $5,000 per church. I mean, estimated. But I doubt we're getting any of that back if we choose to disaffiliate. So a lot has changed. The conference has said, "You know what? We wanna hear who is prayerfully considering this and who feels like now might be the time for them." Bishop Webb shared that if we're thinking about disaffiliation, that we should absolutely apply. He shared that in a public forum with 21 other churches, I believe it was. Some of you were there for that. So took that back to the leadership teams and leadership teams said, "Yep, now is the time. We should be moving forward in this process and seeing where the churches are going." Couple of things about the churches. Both church leadership teams desire to do whatever it is that we're doing together. They wanna continue in the relationship that we have and this partnership with me as a primary pivot point. They wanna continue doing our stuff together. And they understand that if one church chooses to disaffiliate and the other church does not, that that fractures that relationship. Does that make sense? And that's kinda spelled out in the Book of Discipline too, honestly. We're not able to be in two places. You're either part of the United Methodist Church or you're not. So with that being shared, I wanna just share a little bit about how we got to where we are, okay? In 1968, the EUB Church and the Methodist Episcopal Church merged and formed the United Methodist Church. Church formations and denominational formations are not new. As you look back over church history, over the last several hundred years, definitely since the Protestant Reformation and forward, we've seen lots of different branches. When you look at the family tree of the church, it's got a whole bunch of things on it. And in 1968, the United Methodist Church was formed. It hasn't always been. It was a new denomination of two systems coming together. And with that came some great things and with that came some headaches because they took their structure and kinda merged them rather than coming up with something entirely different. Now, some of the challenges of that, we've been navigating tension around scriptural authority since the very beginning. At the very first conference, some of the language around human sexuality came right out of the gate. We started questioning the divinity of Jesus. We started to question... There's been a lot of pieces of conflict around the authority of Scripture as it pertains to our lives with other human beings. And annual conferences have been challenging this. The General Conference has been going at it for the last 40, 50 some odd years, right? 68 till now. And every single General Conference has come up in conversation and in conflict, honestly. If you read the Book of Discipline, what you'll find is that the United Methodist Church is actually a very conservative orthodox church in its views on marriage, on its views on sexuality, on its views on the value of human life, on its views in the world at large. Our discipline is actually fairly conservative in that and in orthodox, orthodox meaning the way the church has kinda believed for a long time, almost 2,000 years, actually. And they view Scripture with a high regard. So the discipline views Scripture as the authoritative word. Now, where we've run into some challenges is that the United Methodist Church is global. It's a worldwide church. It has a presence in over 160 countries. And all around the world, the cross and flame have meant we are the people known as United Methodists. And we're all governed by the same Book of Discipline and we all gather for General Conference every four years, in theory, except in 2019 and then 2022. With all of that being said, we've been housing in a big tent a lot of things. And that's created a lot of problems because there's no room for accountability. Because the way the church is structured geographically, we can only hold people accountable in our geographic location or jurisdiction as the discipline outlines. And that creates some conflict. So what do we do with clergy persons who are actively in disobedience with what the Book of Discipline says and we can't hold them accountable? That creates a problem. It's kinda like if in your house, if your kids do something and mom says it's okay and dad says it's not okay, if you two don't come together and figure it out, it creates a problem. The same thing is happening. And millions of dollars are being spent in legal fees in the court systems as we bring up charges against people that can't ultimately go anywhere. And the church is governed by a legal system. And the legal system kinda helps to navigate, "Okay, this is in bounds or this is out of bounds." They have the final say in doctrinal stuff. Our bishops are supposed to be able to hold one another accountable, but they can't do that outside of their jurisdiction. So some of the things that we're navigating right now, this is live time. We have an openly gay bishop, Karen Olivito. You can Google Karen and see what's taking place in her world and in her life. Our Book of Discipline states that homosexuality is not compatible with Christian teaching and that same-sex marriages cannot be performed inside of a United Methodist Church. Well, nobody's holding Karen Olivito accountable because everybody around her is in agreement with her in her jurisdiction. We have similar issues. A clergy person in the Pittsburgh area, on September the 7th, I believe it was, wrote a letter to the Pittsburgh newspaper stating that he is polyamorous and bisexual and in a marriage and wants the church to acknowledge who he is, but he can't openly say his name because it wouldn't be accepted. There's a lot of challenges right now. There's a lot of things. And it breaks my heart, just to be frank. You know, a little bit about Joe. I'm a cradle Methodist. My dad was a United Methodist preacher. Gave his entire career into the ministry, excuse me. My Uncle Bob was our district superintendent for a little while on the Cornerstone District. The United Methodist Church is not new to me. I was saved in the church. I was baptized in the church when I was 15 years old. I was confirmed in the church. I was a member of the United Methodist Church and a proud one at that. I loved the cross and flame in my early adulthood. I was sanctified in the church. I was purified through the Holy Club. I was called into ministry in the church. In fact, I saw her walk in here somewhere. Pastor Vi Davidson is somewhere, I saw her. Oh yeah, she's sitting, there she is. You can ask her about the crazy youth leader and the call that God had on his life. But if I hadn't been persistent, I wouldn't have responded to that call to serve the Lord in the United Methodist Church. I quit my job, I packed my wife, my kids up and we became itinerant. I was serious about serving the Lord in the United Methodist Church. My heart breaks for what's happening. I can't tell you how many times I've gone to conference and my blood pressure has risen as there's this just vile debate over stuff. I'm like, "Guys, this is what we believe. This is what we signed up for. This is what our discipline says." It's really been ugly. On the other side of that, I know that the church has done a lot of harm to persons who are navigating different gender issues than I am familiar with on bigger sin issues than I'm navigating myself. And we need to repent for that sin. We need to repent where we have been guilty of bigotry. Now, repentance does not mean that we call sin good. Repentance means that we turn from our ways, we get reconciled with God and we live a different life. So we begin to love all people. And I hope you know this by now about myself and about the churches that are gathered here and represented tonight. We love people. It doesn't really matter what your sexual orientation is. It doesn't really matter what sin you might be navigating today. Just had a guy stop at my house with a woman who is having some serious issues with drug addiction. That was this afternoon. They stopped first at Pastor Brandon's house. Just today, during the Bills game. We navigate people. People matter. You were created in the image of the Almighty God and you are of sacred worth because of that, period. And we won't have part with a church that doesn't value and believe that. And I believe that people that don't agree with me are well-intentioned. I believe that they mean what they're saying. Some of my friends who don't agree with me on the authority of Scripture do love people and they're hurt by the fact that people have been hurt. And I grieve with that same sentiment. But God gets the final say. We don't get to put Scripture into buckets. There's been a person who wrote a book about Scripture being put into three different buckets. We don't get to put Scripture into buckets because then we become the ones that become the final authority. And that's not how God intended it. With all that being said, I wanna share the primary reasons why the leadership team believes that now is the time for the church to consider disaffiliation. And by the way, I really don't like that language. But that's the language of the discipline. And it sounds like, "Why do I have to disaffiliate from something that I love?" We've identified three primary reasons. And that was mapped out in the FAQ sheet that you all should have received. And if you haven't, you can ask for one and we can put one into your hands. But we wanna remain consistent in a traditional view of Scripture and the authority of it. We wanna remain fiscally responsible to what God has asked of us. We wanna reengage in a system of mutual accountability. I already shared that the system is broken. We can't hold one another accountable. You would be appalled at some of the things that clergy persons around the connection are doing. This is not just out of our jurisdiction. This is even just over the borders where bishops aren't holding accountable. Clergy persons who are denying the divinity of Christ publicly from the pulpit. Karen Olivito said that you don't even need to accept Jesus to be reconciled to God. She didn't even really recognize God, actually, in her one statement. She's a bishop in our church and she's not alone in that, by the way. We need to reengage in a system of mutual accountability for the sake of the body of Christ. You can't have people in positions of authority usurping the system. That doesn't work. It's necessary for myself. I'm not willing to be part of a system where we don't have accountability. Because who gets to determine what is right and what is wrong if God doesn't have the final say? We believe that engaging in the Global Methodist Church will help to accomplish these goals. I'm gonna talk a little bit about that towards the end. And to remain faithful in our calling to live out the faith with a Wesleyan emphasis. We are Wesleyans as United Methodists. We're part of a connection, part of the body of Christ in a larger way. And then finally, I wanna leave you with a couple of things. As a church, we believe and will continue to believe, and I've shared this a couple of times already, in the sacred worth of every human being. You gotta really let that sink in, that people are of value because they are created in the image of God, period. Scripture says that "He knit us together in our mother's womb," that "before we were even thought of, He knew us." People are loved, even those that don't agree with me, even those that don't agree with you. And as the church, we need to do a better job of loving fully. Now, a little bit about the Global Methodist Church. It was formed out of the United Methodist Church. So it's a purer expression of traditional Wesleyan holiness in practice and in structure. It's not a gay-hating church. That's something that I've heard recently. Please don't say that. That language doesn't have any space in the church, especially the one that I'm leading, okay? We don't wanna use the word hatred apart from sin, period. Like, we detest sin. But let's not start to pick apart sins, okay? But it is not a gay-hating church, nor should it ever be expressed as such. The Transitional Book of Discipline, which is the governing book of discipline for the Global Methodist Church, doesn't even actually reference the word homosexuality. What it does say regarding sexuality, and I wanna read this verbatim for you, is, "We believe human sexuality is a gift of God that is to be affirmed as it is exercised within the legal and spiritual covenant of a loving and monogamous marriage between one man and one woman." Those scriptural references where that is found is in Exodus, Chapter 20, Matthew, Chapter 19, and Ephesians, Chapter 5. Says, "And we are saddened by all expressions of sexual behavior, including pornography, polygamy, and promiscuity that do not recognize the sacred worth of each individual or that seek to exploit, abuse, objectify, or degrade others or that represent less than God's intentional design for His children." "While affirming a scriptural view of sexuality and gender, we welcome all to experience the redemptive grace of Jesus and are committed to being a safe place of refuge, hospitality, and healing for any who may have experienced brokenness in their sexual lives." Some scriptural references to help show the support of that in Scripture is Genesis, Chapter 1, "Who we are made in the image of," Genesis, Chapter 2, "The design of a man and a woman," and 1 Corinthians, Chapter 6. Many in the United Methodist leadership have begun abandoning some of our core Christian beliefs. The Global Methodist Church has said, "We have to do something where Scripture becomes authoritative again, where it is the book that we launch off of." And let me finish by casting maybe a vision for where I hope and pray that we as a church would head in the future. This has nothing to do with the Global Methodist Church. It just has to do with us as Christians. In 1675, a German pietist by the name of Jacob Spencer was attempting to renew the Lutheran Church in Germany. And he wrote a book entitled Pia Desideria. Spencer's work led to the formation of colleges of piety throughout Germany. Those led to religious societies in England and those societies in England eventually led to the SPPCK or the Society for Promoting Christian Knowledge, which influenced a man by the name of Samuel Wesley, who influenced his son, John Wesley, who founded the Methodist Church in England and the U.S. in the 1700s. Now, some of you know this name, some of you might not. Richard Heitznerater. Anybody recognize that name? If you don't recognize that name, I want you to just take a look at Mrs. Heitznerater, well, Ms... Well, maiden name, Heitznerater. Richard is Betty Lou's brother, correct? A fantastic scholar in the world of Wesley. But he wrote a book titled Wesley and the People Called Methodist. And he outlined six desires of piety and it gives us what I believe is a vision not only for the church, but for each of us in practice in the future. He said, "First, in order to ground its life in the proper authority, the church needed to reemphasize the study of Scripture. Second, renewal of the church required the active involvement in concern of the laity. It is not just the role of the clergy or the professionals. Third, more emphasis should be placed on evangelical zeal, a passion for the lost. There should be a practical focus on Christian living rather than intellectual acumen." Think about that for a moment. What if we stopped just trying to gain knowledge and started to live into the holiness that God has not only requested of us, but empowered us by His Holy Spirit? Preaching should be aimed at the salvation of the listener, not simply for instruction or correction. Ministerial training, this one was my favorite. Ministerial training should emphasize the development of moral and spiritual qualities in the life of the clergy person. We wouldn't be in the situation that we're in if clergy were women and men of God who were radically pursuing a right relationship with Jesus. We're where we are because clergy, and I apologize on behalf of the clergy, have dropped the ball. We have abdicated our responsibilities in the Methodist Church. And we started doing so right at the very beginning. Now, a few things that you should probably know. Every person who desires to have a voice will have a voice. I've tried to field all of the questions that you've given me. I've put them into a document. I'm gonna answer all of them. Everyone who desires to have a voice will have a voice. Second, every professing member of Bemis Point and Park United Methodist Church will have a vote if and when we decide to vote. Does that make sense? This is not something that is done lightly. Over the next couple of months, we're gonna enter into a season of prayer and fasting. We're gonna put information before you. You're gonna have to do some work on your end. You're gonna have to seek the Lord. You're gonna have to ask questions. You're gonna have to gain knowledge so you can come to a proper decision. And then we're gonna move together. Now, before I answer any questions, I wanna... I wanna pray for us. The church is broken, friends. I've got lists of areas where we have failed. But it's still His church. And it's still God's desire that we would bring the good news of Jesus Christ to a broken and lost world and that we would live into the fullness of the gospel, that we would proclaim that God doesn't leave us in our broken state. He purifies us from all ungodliness, Scripture says. And that's the church that we wanna be. That's the church that I signed up to lead. When I said, "I'm in," that was what I meant. I meant, I was the crazy preacher who had just his Bible, no education, literally none, and the power of the Holy Spirit, and I trusted God. Let's pray. Jesus, thank you for your faithfulness when we haven't been faithful. Thank you, Lord, that you have not left us as orphans, but that you have been present with us in our very time of affliction and when we have afflicted others. Now, Lord, as we navigate wisdom, would Your Holy Spirit give us that? We're seeking You today, Lord. I pray that You would give me the words to communicate. And God, I pray that our hearts would stay humble and pure, and that You would be glorified. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay, I'm just going to walk through every question that I've received, is that okay? And I'll just answer them, so you can know that I'm not going to skip anything. I will say that I would ask if you have a question from the floor tonight, that you do your best to ask questions about disaffiliation. Right? So I know that there's some concerns about other things at times. Those are more in conversations for a different time. Right now, we're talking about disaffiliation and affiliation. So the first question was, "How many others are broken-hearted over the message this sends to those we love who are gay?" The GMC and our brochure states, "This isn't solely an issue regarding homosexuality, but myself and others are confident that it is." Like I shared earlier, human sexuality is one piece of the puzzle. But really, the bigger issue for us right now, I think, facing us is the ecclesiastical disobedience and that we don't have a system of accountability. As you read through the Book of Discipline and you listen to the doctrinal statements of the United Methodist Church, where actually, our language right now says that homosexuality is not compatible with Christian teaching. And that language around homosexuality specifically has carried the day since 1968 in the General Conference voting. Our church has a very high view of scripture in practice, sorry, in doctrine, but not in practice. So we aren't holding each other accountable there. I mean, there are other issues for sure, but really, it's the ecclesiastical disobedience right now, and that we can't, we're broken. And there's no way to reconcile that. If that reason was removed, what are the other reasons for considering disaffiliation? Well, I mentioned earlier that to be wise stewards of the finances that God has given us, and I want to just share a couple of things with you. Currently, the United Methodist Church holds in trust all of the properties of the United Methodist Church. And I might, I know that we have people here who understand property law. And that's not me, but I do know that the Trust Clause was enacted. So when that was originally put in, it was designed to protect the church from clergy persons or laity who started to preach doctrine that was in conflict with the Methodist Church's doctrine. Think about that for a moment. That's why the Trust Clause was put in there, was to preserve the church, so that we could remove clergy persons and laity who were trying to have an uprising and take the properties. Now, the Trust Clause has become a bit of a noose at times. But one of the things that has opened up is that in the midst of disaffiliation, the local church would own all of its properties, period, free and clear. So for Bemis Point, we would own Bemis Point and the parsonage, free and clear. There would no longer be any trust, it would be deeded to the local church, and the trustees of the local church would be the responsible party for it. For Park Church, that means the properties of St. Clairville and Casadega would be deeded to Park United, well, it wouldn't be Park United Methodist Church any longer, but Park Church, whatever that is. Couple other things as far as it pertains to the financial implications and our responsibility. Currently, in the Upper New York Annual Conference, we have a ministry share, are we familiar with that language? I need to kind of get a read of the room, okay? It's the same thing as apportements, but I'm guessing you probably have no idea what those are either. Oh, that's a great question, Jerry, what's an apportionment? Ministry shares are the percentage of resources, money, that the local church gives back to the denomination to remain connectional. Does that make sense? For Bemis Point, and those numbers are a calculation on a three-year rolling average. So three years ago, our financial stability was such, and it's 14.3%. So for Bemis Point, it's $109,000, that's our ministry share. For Park Church, it's $60,000, that is our ministry share. Okay, per year, annually. Bemis Point is in arrears to the tune of about $30,000. We've been chipping away at that every year, the last two years since I've been here, we've increased by $5,000 each year to try to get us back to current. Okay, as our financial stability has gone up, we've tried to make right on our debts. Now, if we disaffiliate and were to affiliate, well, you can see that if we disaffiliate and do absolutely nothing else, that would be a savings of $109,000 and $60,000. Our proposal is that we would affiliate with a Wesleyan denomination, specifically the Global Methodist Church. The Global Methodist Church and its Book of Doctrines and Discipline states that there's a cap of the ministry shares at 6.5%. So just a quick math for you, that means a savings of 55%. For Bemis Point, that's $59,950 that we could put into ministry right here in Chautauqua County. Or wherever we deemed appropriate as the church body. For Park Church, that means that we would have a savings of $33,000 annually that we would specify and say, "Okay, Lord, where would you have us to use these resources while still staying connected to the larger system?" Also, in the global Methodist Church, the bureaucratic top that we are experiencing in the United Methodist Church is virtually gone. The boards and agencies are very minimal, there's no seminaries, there's no hospitals, there's no ownership of property, which is bankrupting the church honestly right now. And there's no, the streamlining of the bureaucratic system. So how we're governed, that was one of the questions that came out, I'm answering it ahead of time, I guess. How we're governed in the global Methodist Church would be presiding elders that would oversee areas. We would do away with the district superintendents, and the bishops would oversee a larger geographic area. It would be a streamlined system, the whole purpose behind the GMC was to get back to the grassroots movement of Methodism, spreading scriptural holiness across the land for the transformation of the world. So those are some of the financial savings that we would experience. And then the other was to reengage a system of mutual accountability. And clergy who actively deny the divinity of Christ would be defrocked. Clergy who actively perform same-sex union in the church, even though it's explicitly in conflict with our current Book of Discipline, would be defrocked. The system for accountability extends across the entire connection, not just a geographic area, if that makes sense. The other, the other portion of that question, what are some other reasons for considering disaffiliation? We feel pretty strongly that God has asked us to be faithful to the scriptures. So when we're in conflict with that, with our brothers and sisters that we're in covenant with, there's friction around that. And that doesn't seem to be moving. Even though there's been attempts to try to move that and to reconcile it without doing damage, it doesn't seem to be moving at all. Will the votes of Bemis Point be combined with Park Church? No. Each individual church will vote independently, they are functioning independently, the only common theme here is this guy. Okay, and I don't have a vote, actually, so that doesn't matter. But no, the churches will not vote together. Is it possible to have one church impact the choice of the other church? That's a difficult question to answer. I think what I've experienced in both churches is that both leadership teams are unanimous. We've got 24 people plus staff and whatnot saying, "We feel this is the direction we should go together." So I don't know if it's a matter of one influencing the other, but I think both churches are kind of moving in similar directions theologically, and then their feelings of financial stewardship and in their regard to accountability. Who are the decision-makers to bring Bemis Point to this point of seriously considering disaffiliation? That's our leadership team ultimately, in conjunction with staff for sure, and clergy for sure, and our conference leaders for sure, and other churches. But it wasn't, it's not a unilateral decision. Our leadership team has talked about this and prayed about this for a while. What are some of the resources decision-makers have used to consider both perspectives? Joining the GMC or staying within the United Methodist Church? And what is being referred to as P S, or post-separation United Methodism, United Methodist Church? We've consulted the Book of Discipline of the United Methodist Church, which is available to any and all people. You can access the entire Book of Discipline online for free. And you're welcome to read it, it's lengthy. And it has a little bit of legal jargon, you might need some help, I do it interpreting it at times. The same is true for the global Methodist Church of Book of Doctrine and Discipline. Some of the other consultations came from Bishop Webb, our resident bishop in the Upper New York Annual Conference, and members of other churches in our area. Do decision-makers have family members? The spirit behind the next question, if I could just answer it, I'll give you the answer. The spirit behind the next question, I think, is, do people that are making these decisions have close family members who are navigating sexual identity things? Whether it be transgenderism, homosexuality, sexual or gender dysphoria, any, any sexual thing? And the answer to that question is yes. I have multiple people that I'm very close to who are homosexual and have had very difficult conversations with people. And, you know, I think the other, the other part of that question is, how do we, how do you talk with them about this, right? Have they experienced firsthand the impact the message of disaffiliation sends to those they deeply love? I can tell you personally, yes, that I have. So I know the conversations that take place on the other side of that. And it's not easy. What do you tell your gay loved ones about Christ's love for them and inclusion in His church? You tell people that they are created in the image of God and they are of sacred worth, and that Jesus Christ died for your sins. Period. And that God loves you. That God loves you, and you are, you are a human being, a child of the one true God. And we work to love people. But loving people doesn't mean we change the scriptures to affirm what God has said isn't right. But that's across the board. As a church, we have to get better at standing up for what God has said, this isn't right. Loving people who are actively engaging in sin and not wavering on what we know is true, as referred to and comes out of the scriptures. That's not easy. And there's a lot of tears, and there should be pain. There should be sorrow, right? But God has the final word. We don't. Even if we would all agree on one interpretation of scripture, that the practice of homosexuality is incompatible with Christian teaching, why are we considered dividing over this practice while seemingly overlooking so many other practices that are incompatible with Christian teaching? That's a wonderful question. We should not be saying that things are incompatible with scripture are good. We should be coming against evil in whatever form it presents. Friends, if you joined the United Methodist Church, you took sacred vows to come against evil in whatever form it presents itself. If you've been baptized into Christ's holy church known as the United Methodist Church, one of the things that we ask you is, "Do you reject the evil powers of this world?" We come against evil and oppression, period. We stand for truth all the time. When the church violates that, we need to have a system of accountability that can hold someone accountable. That can say, "You're out of bounds. If you don't reconcile and repent, then you're not going to be able to be in your position of leadership any longer." Hear me very carefully too on this. The church is open to all persons. I hope you know that. And it's always been that way. The scriptures make that really clear, right? When Paul's addressing the church and he says, "There's neither Jew nor Greek nor slave nor free nor male nor female, but we're all one in Christ Jesus." When Paul's talking to the Galatian church there, he's giving them very, this is open to anyone. And we've got to get better at loving people. What happens to those of us who have called BP U M C our church home for decades and disagree with disaffiliation? We've invested our heart, our soul, our time, our talents, our finances. We've taught our children and grandchildren about faith here, we've strengthened our own faith here. We were baptized, we were married, and we have mourned here, we have created friendships and family here. This potential fracture, especially for the driving reason, is heartbreaking. It is. It's very sad. We haven't, we have to right the ship, if you will, and walk in faith. It breaks my heart. I mean, I personally have a lot on the line. I mean, I'm employed by the church. Not Bemis Point or not Park Church, I'm employed by the United Methodist Church. But I'm not willing to say that evil is good. And I'm not willing to say that we gotta keep on doing what we're doing because it seems to be working, because it's not working. We have to separate and then reconcile through grace. I think I can answer that question a little bit better. There's, well, there's another question that's going to come up that might give some insight into that, so I'm just going to keep going for right now. Will Bemis Point's meetings share resources for both sides of the dialogue? www.unyumc.com, I think it is, maybe it's org. If you type in Upper New York United Methodist Church, you'll find it. There's a ton of resources about who we are as United Methodists. If you want to know about the global Methodist Church, it's www.globalmethodistchurch.org or com, one of the two. And the Book of Doctrines and Discipline is on their website also. All of, all of these things that you may be questioning and wondering about are mapped out in those two systems. You're going to find that they're very similar in their narrative. Except the Transitional Book of Doctrine and Discipline for the global Methodist Church is about 100 pages, and the Book of Discipline for the United Methodist Church is 500 pages. They've really worked to bring the authority back to the local church, but to have a governance overarching a minor governance, a system of accountability and resourcing. If we stay in the United Methodist Church, what does it look like? That's a great question. These are, these next two questions are both hypothetical, and I don't really know the answer to that. So it might be foolish to answer them. So if we stay in the United Methodist Church, what does that look like? If we stay in the global Methodist Church, what does that look like? Or if we join the global Methodist Church? Those are hypotheticals, I don't really know the answer. I do know that there will be continued tension in the United Methodist Church. I do know that we will still have a system that doesn't have accountability across denomination, across the denomination. I do know that we will be part of a system where I foresee that there will be language shifting in the Book of Discipline. And we'll see an increase in the questioning of the authority of scripture. That's been happening since the beginning, and it's been on the rise, it's been an increasing number. In the global Methodist Church, I don't know that either. I'm sure that like any system, that there will be bumps along the way. But they've done their best on the front end to try to make it a reasonable way to at least map it out. And to give voice to the clergy, voice to the laity, a movement of joint unity together. What does it look like for us? I would hope, my prayer, is that we gather for worship on Sunday mornings as Christians. And that we have clergy who continue to preach scriptural holiness. And that we have a body of believers who digs deep into the scriptures and allows the Spirit of God to transform us from the inside out. That's my hope. That a logo may change on the front of the building, but inside the building, we continue to grow. And we continue to flourish, and we continue to engage in ministries of service and mercy and acts of piety. That's my vision. Could we poll all the congregants at a service, not just members, to get a pulse of how they anonymously feel on this? Have we ever done this? Could we also poll members and compare the two results? Here's the short answer to that. The poll is going to kind of take place through our conversations. We're not going to do that on a Sunday morning. And hear my heart in this next statement, as your spiritual leader, Sunday morning is for worshiping Almighty God. We've already pushed my comfort levels with things that I've shared on Sundays. I prefer having no announcements during our worship service. I prefer that our worship service was just celebration and proclamation. And that the other stuff, the work of the church, gets done somewhere else in some other way. So it's not going to happen on a Sunday morning during the service. But I think the poll will also take place as we get towards a vote and what that looks like. Our leadership team is a pretty diverse group of people. And they, there's a sense that we have a pretty good pulse on the body because of the diversity. So a pretty good pulse of where the church kind of feels we are in moving together. I don't have a, I wish I could tell you yes to that, but it's, I don't think a yes. And no, I don't believe we've ever done this. This is our way of doing that right now with town hall meetings. Our church is large enough to divide into two. Locate, like geographic, like it's big enough, there's 60,000 square feet here, there's 30,000 square feet at Park Church, plus another building of probably 12,000 square feet. It's large enough to divide into two spaces, is it possible to create two churches out of BP U M C? The really easy answer to that is no. Because the two systems can't coexist. Because the one would be held in trust still, and you couldn't have a gathering of the global Methodist Church inside of it. Plus, the doctrinal standards of the two would be in conflict with each other at times. Right? So if the, if the sexual identity and sexual marriage clauses changed in the United Methodist Church, and it's not that way in the global Methodist Church, then you couldn't perform ceremonies here, there would just be conflict. It would be conflict under the roof, and that wouldn't be a good scenario. So I don't see that as a possibility. I mean, it's out there now publicly, so our leadership teams can talk about that. But I don't think the disciplines, either of them, would allow for that. So moving, moving forward a little bit, and this is, will current members of Park United Methodist Church who vote not to disaffiliate be able to opt out of membership into the global Methodist Church? This is the one I said, I think, one of these questions is going to get answered a little further down. The answer to that is yes. So what happens if the churches determine that we disaffiliate? If we vote to disaffiliate and that's approved, and there's a process for that, which I'll give you in just a minute. But if we vote to do that, then what happens is, once they've been approved at annual conference for disaffiliation, all membership within the local church ceases. Does that make sense? So all membership is revoked essentially. So if someone wanted to join the United Methodist Church, they would have to do so in a different United Methodist Church. So if someone wanted to join the United Methodist Church, they would have to do so in a different United Methodist Church. Someone asked me, could we join the UMC and still worship here? The answer to that question is not with integrity. Because your sacred membership vows, you state that you will give to the local church where you are a member of. You will give of your time, of your talents, and of your finances. So if you're worshiping somewhere else, you see how that doesn't work with integrity? And no, you do not have to join the Global Methodist Church. In fact, there would be a process for that. If the church decided that that was the direction we were going to go, then each person would have the right to, it's not apply, but you would have the option to join the church if that makes sense. Clergy are the ones that have to apply. Which by the way, is a pretty rigid vetting system so far. They've, of the, I think they're, they're close to 1,000, if not over 1,000 churches have come in, but they've already denied five clergy persons. They've denied membership to five clergy persons. So the vetting process, that's part of why we're in the trouble that we're in is that the local system hasn't done its job of vetting clergy persons who are expressing a call into ministry. We felt bad telling someone, well, we think that pastoral ministry isn't the right place for you. Which we really should be having those conversations. It doesn't mean we don't love you. It just means that this isn't the right spot for you. So moving on to the next question, just who are we breaking away from? This is probably, I think at the heart of this question is what is the number one thing that I get asked? Why do we have to leave? If I agree with what it states, why do we have to leave? That's a great question. And the reality is because the system is broken and we can't hold accountable those that are in direct defiance of the Book of Discipline. And there's just been tension for too long. And at this point, we're saying, maybe it's a good move financially for the local church, better stewardship? To be in a system that's smaller, that is seeking spiritual and missional holiness? I don't want to leave either. Remember talking to somebody about the cross and the flame, saying, I'm never giving up the ship. I don't think that's the right move any longer. There's just been too much, too much fighting. And somebody has to stop it. Somebody has to say enough. I'm going to stop. Because bad things are happening as a result of it. Why are we disaffiliating? That's the same one. What about the current debt at Park and Bemis? Well, good news. You'll own your buildings and your debt, just like you do now. You own your debt, but not the buildings. Bemis Point still owes about 1.63 million dollars on this property. Park Church owes a little less than, I think it's 1.5 and change right now, high 1.5s, I think it is. So both churches would be able to retain their debt. They'd be able to hold on to that until they pay it off entirely. Will the progressive movement get help from the Supreme Court on enforcing same-sex unions in the churches? I think what's at the spirit of that question is, could the court system say the local church has to perform same-sex marriages? That's outside my pay grade, okay? That's the bottom line. And that goes state by state too, I believe. So this becomes very complicated with what the state can enforce inside of the local church. So I don't have a great answer for that and I'm not willing to throw one out there. Why are we not making? The question was, why are we not making God or the Bible leading us more important than doctrines and other things, I think? I think that's the question. Our attempt as a church is to remain faithful to scripture. That's our desire. That's the heart's desire of the clergy and of the leadership team. And what I believe is the vast majority of Christians that I've met, their desire is to be faithful people to God. They love the Lord. Right? We've just lost the power at times of the Holy Spirit. What will we be part of if we disaffiliate? Well, our proposal is that we would affiliate with the Global Methodist Church. That's the short answer to that. Next question. That's another one. Why are we the ones having to disaffiliate? Is the Global Methodist Church the African Church? So this was a great conversation that we had on the phone. So it helped me to give some clarity to it and I want to answer that this evening. No. The African Church is, everybody will make their own decisions. The Global Methodist Church is a denomination that actually is started in the United States and will become, I know the name global, right? Makes you think it's all over the world. It's just starting in some other portions of the world as well. But I don't know what the African Church will do. The African church, the African branch of the United Methodist Church. What typically happens with the African Church? Now I'm painting with a big brush here. Is the African churches tend to move as one unit. Does that make sense? So if it comes determined that we're going to go, then everybody goes. If it comes determined that we're going to stay, then everybody stays. Right now, the African bishops are saying one thing. And the leaders in the church that aren't the bishops are saying something very different. The African church tends to want to be institutionalist. Because there's strength in the system for them. There's stability in the system for them. What the bishops are navigating is if the African church disaffiliates, they wouldn't have their jobs. Bishops are paid a fairly hefty salary, even in Africa. And so there's some friction in some of the dialogue that's taking place. But no, it wouldn't be the African church. If so, will we be subject to the different persecutions we are hearing about in Africa? That? I pray the answer to that question is no. But my, and this has nothing to do with Global Methodist, United Methodist, this has nothing to do with any of that. But my concern for people known as Christians is that the fire is going to get hot. And that's what we see in history. That the fire is going to get hot. In other words, I think there's going to be increased persecution against the church. Maybe not in the exact same ways all over the world. But the church is going to be pressured. If not overtly persecuted. We know that there has been crime and hate crimes targeted against the church on American soil. If you've watched the news over the last couple of years, some of the mass shootings have been in churches. I mean, so the answer to that question is, I think we would all be subject to persecution. It's a matter of what level of persecution there is, but joining the Global Methodist Church has nothing to do with that. Who will be governing the Global Methodist Church? The Global Methodist Church is governed in a very similar structure on paper to the United Methodist Church. Bishops oversee. The beautiful thing about the Global Methodist Church is that bishops have terms. It's not life term, so they're not bishops for life. They serve a term and then they're off and they're not eligible again. You can kind of see where that might be a good thing. And it's 12 years, I believe, right now that they can serve as bishops. And they would preside over a geographic area. There would be presiding elders that oversee the churches. Basically, they're a connectional resource to the local churches. Similar to what I'm doing with Gary, Charlotte Center, DeWittville, and Pleasant Valley. So similar to my oversight in those churches, when I'm walking with them in clergy leadership, it's a very similar structure to that on paper. What about another vein of methodism? Sorry, the question before that is, what about going non-denominational? That question has come up a couple of different times. And I'll just give you my answer, okay? This is just Pastor Joe. That's a decision that the church could make. If the church makes that decision, I'm no longer your pastor. I will not lead a non-denominational church. I believe in the system of accountability. I'm a Wesleyan. Wesleyans are part of a larger system that is in a movement together and for accountability. And I think that's really the only answer that needs to be given right there. It's obviously an option that the church leadership teams could consider. But as your pastor, I'd help you get to that decision, I guess, and then I would be done personally. And Pastor Tom and Pastor Brandon would have to answer that question on their own, but that's my answer. What about another vein of methodism? There are other veins of methodism. That's a great question. What are they? Do we know what other, who other Methodists are? Free Methodists, if they have the word Methodist in their name, they're part of the Methodist system, right? They're part of the bigger system. Free Methodism, yeah. The Methodist, the AMZ, American Methodist Zion Church, I think it is. That's an African church in America. Methodist Episcopal Church. That's what merged, that's what merged with the Ecumenical United Brethren to form the United Methodist Church. Yep. The Wesleyan Church, the Nazarenes, Church of God, I think? Anything that's Wesleyan. The answer to that question is, our leadership team has talked about that, if we would join another vein of methodism. And we're already starting to see the fracturing inside of the other systems. Over some of the same issues that the United Methodist Church is now fracturing. So we feel pretty strongly that it wouldn't be a wise move to join something else that's already beginning this process. Plus, we signed up to be United Methodists. We like the doctrine of the Methodist Church, of the United Methodist Church. And the Global Methodist Church is a pure form of that, a raw form of that. What are the other interpretations of scripture issues leading to disaffiliation other than what pertains to human sexuality? As we talked about, human life and the sanctity of human life, that's one of the issues. That's a big issue actually of conversation. So just so you understand the structure of the church, we don't have a papal system. That just means we don't have a pope. We don't have one person who is the leader of the Council of Bishops. The Council of Bishops are all accountable to each other in theory, but only in their jurisdictional area. Well, when when the Supreme Court ruled in opposition to Roe v. Wade this year, the the chairperson for the Council of Bishops sent a public letter out stating that we, I'm paraphrasing very poorly right here, but you can find this letter. Stating that we we are in opposition to this. That we believe in the right to choose. And as United Methodists, that's not what our doctrine states actually. And he had no authority to write that letter. But because he's in a system where he can't be held accountable, there couldn't even be accountability against him. We're really broken. Those are just two. The divinity of Christ, that Jesus Christ is the Savior, period. That there is not other ways to salvation, there is only one way. That's one. The virgin birth. This is disagreed upon in clergy in our conference, in the Upper New York Conference. The virgin birth, this is not a theology class, but I can tell you why that's really important. If you'd like to know later. There's a lot of them. It's the authority of scripture really. I know that sexuality is a piece of that. But it's really about the authority of scripture. What has the final say in how life is lived out by human beings? What are the cost implications? I already shared that, I think, hopefully that answered, I answered that question previously. And the cost of disaffiliation and the savings to the local church and the money that we could invest into local missions or national missions as we saw fit. In your video, it sounds like it has already been determined. That is not true. So I'm sorry if the video came across that way. Forgive me for that. That was a poor leadership mark if that's the case. The leadership team has determined where they think we should go. Now the bodies need to come to discernment as well about that. And so there hasn't been a decision. By the way, the process, real quick, is, it's quite simple. The first was applying, saying, hey, we want to prayerfully consider this. The second step in the process is prayerfully considering this, discernment. The third step in the process is voting as a church. The next step in the process is we would need to pay the annual conference two weeks prior to annual conference, the sum of money for disaffiliation, whatever that total is. It will not be any higher than the numbers that I've already given you of 306,000 and 163,000. If the bond market continues to change in favor, then it would be reduced even more so. Does that make sense? If the bond market changes and it goes the other direction, our trustees in the Upper New York Conference have said, this is the most that you'll pay. 306,000 and 163,000. I know at times we felt like the church is being punitive and holding us hostage and that's not the case. Actually, our conference is one of the few that is actually just saying, we're going to just enact what the Book of Discipline says we have to enact. We're not adding any other penalties. If you ask our brothers and sisters right across the border, they got to pay a percentage of the real property value, like 25%. That would move our number from 303,000 at Bemis or 306,000 at Bemis to 2.6 million. Our trustees have tried to do right. And that's a direct result of the fact that we had a faithful bishop. Who is retiring January 1st, by the way. Yep. Remember what I said previously was that when it comes time to vote, that will be only members, only members of the individual Methodist churches. Okay? Continuing on, what's the process regarding property ownership? I've kind of already shared that. What is the vision of what BP UMC would look like in the future? I already shared that too. I hope we continue to make disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. We won't be able to use that exact same language because that would belong to the United Methodist Church if we were to leave. But we would do exactly what Jesus told us to do. And we would love our neighbors really well and we would engage in missional service. We would get teams together to go on mission trips. We would engage in acts of mercy. We would continue to feed the hungry and clothe the naked. We would care for the widows and the orphans. We would do all the things that we're doing right now. We would just have a different title. Would BP have an affiliation with a different denomination? That question has been answered already, I think with, we'll have to determine that. But our leadership team's suggestion and my recommendation is that we would affiliate with the Global Methodist Church. Next question was, assuming we do make the move to the Global Methodist Church, do or will they have a similar leadership structure as the UMC? I've already shared that, I think. Did I answer that question well enough? That they will have bishops that govern and oversee. They will be limited to terms. They will be held accountable to the whole Council of Bishops across the entire denomination, not just geographically and jurisdictions. And they will have superintendents, but they're presiding elders actually, that oversee a handful of churches. They will not own district offices. They will not own conference offices. They will function out of their homes, bishops included. So they've really worked to streamline the bureaucratic system that is known as the United Methodist Church right now. I have not seen that yet. That will be voted on at their convening annual general conference, which doesn't take place until 2024. I'm going to come back to that in just a minute. Oh, that's actually the last question. If the local church was to determine that we were to join the Global Methodist Church. For the first two years, the Global Methodist Church's transitional leadership team has said, we're only going to ask for 2% in shared ministries. And if the local church finds 2% a hardship, they can apply for zero. So for our local churches, what that means in real dollar numbers is throughout 2023 and 2024, Bemis Point could save $220,000, Park Church could save $120,000. You do the math for how close that puts us in two years to the total disaffiliation cost. I know it's costly to disaffiliate. But they're trying to make it reasonable for the local church and to remove the burden that has been put upon the local churches. That's all I have for questions that have been given to me ahead of time. You want to take a break or do you want me to answer some from the floor? There's one on the back, Tim. Yeah, that's a great question. So one of the things that's a benefit of our, the Wesleyan denomination essentially, is the appointment system. So the bishops appoint clergy persons to the local churches. And same system. It's a refined version of that, so it has a better partnership with the church and the bishop. So right now, what takes place is the bishop appoints. The church doesn't have the ability to say no, actually. I know we feel like we do at times, but we really don't. It's not, when our district superintendent brings a clergy person in, it's not, hey, what do you think about this person? You want to do an interview and see if you like them? That's not the case. It's an appointment and that's your clergy person. That's not the case, it's an appointment, um, and that's your clergy person. It's, hey, meet your new clergy, right? In the new system, there's a, a mutual working together between clergy, church, and bishops. There was another question, I'm, I'll come back to you, there was another question I thought maybe in the back, Cam.
Why is it that we have to prepay for the funding of the pensions that are up?
Yep.
Uh, and the end is gonna be because the discipline says we have to.
Yep.
And the discipline that the mothership leaders are not adhering to, they give them. So we have a system where we pick and choose over time.
Oh, Cam, you know, you're, I'll get there.
Then, uh, and it's also a system of, we can't trust you in K over time on these things as you would normally, because we don't trust you, which means, as my father told me many years ago, if you don't trust me, I don't trust you.
So I, let me, let me rephrase the question for those of you that are online with us. Uh, the question was, why is it that we have to prepay the unfunded pension liability? And basically, why isn't it an option to pay that over time? Is that, that's the heart of the question. There was a few other things, if you're online, a, a little narrative that explained the why. He answered the question for us, it's because the Book of Discipline says that. What the Judicial Council, which is the governing group that says how the discipline, if, if a ruling is in order or out of order, has said is that the local annual conferences, it's the bishop's job to uphold the discipline. Does that make sense so far? So our resident bishop is Mark Webb. I took, our resident bishop is, I wanna be careful what I say. I took Mark, Mark Webb and I went out after, uh, our last gathering with some other clergy. And I said to him, Bishop Webb, if the trustees of the Upper New York Annual Conference agreed to a promissory note, which is what Cam is asking about, basically, a promise to pay over time, would you approve that? And he knew exactly what I was asking, and he looked at me and said, no, I would rule them out of order, because it's in violation with the Book of Discipline. And he personally has taken a sacred vow, and he's maintaining that sacred vow all the way through. Our conference actually doesn't have a whole lot of friction in areas. When charges are brought up, Bishop Webb addresses the charges, there have been clergy who have been defrocked. But there's a moratorium right now on charges to try to not bankrupt the system, basically. Until we get this figured out, till general conference happens, was the, was the length of the moratorium. I understand what you're saying.
So basically, we play by the law?
Well, I, that's exactly, so, uh, we take the high road. Yeah. And the reason that we pay the unfunded pension liability is because we owe it to the clergy who served faithfully for decades. Another question, I'll come up here first, Jerry, I told you I'd come back to you. Do you have the question still, or?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, boy. Uh,
One, one, and I'll just give it to you, then you can do it.
Okay.
One of them was, the government already showed us the last two years.
I was trying.
Stand up, I gotta have my mask on.
Can I help you, can I help you with this a little bit here, for just a minute? I, I know what you're getting at. I did not word that question verbatim. I don't know the answer. That's what I told you previously. I don't know the answer to, is the government going to inflict, i- is, is the government going to mandate that the local church perform same-sex unions? I do not know the answer to that. And the Global Methodist Church wouldn't necessarily be able to stop that. No denomination, no structure would be able to necessarily stop that. It'd be a very conflicting thing, and that would have to be navigated when that were to happen.
I don't think they would use that as a trump card.
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I don't think we're gonna solve that right now.
The other question, the other question is.
Yep.
Who are we answering to? The world church, the United Church, who, who's money, who's not gonna get the money? If we disaffiliate instead of three hundred and how much we could save? Who's getting short church? Who's getting cut off, getting money now? Is it the world church?
It's,
Is it the district?
Yep, so let me, I think I know your question. So his question is, if we disaffiliate, if we disaffiliate, who stops receiving funds from the local church? Right? The answer is all of the above. So the district wouldn't receive funds from the local church, the annual conference wouldn't receive funds from the local church, and the denomination would stop receiving funds from the local church. It's, it's a complicated, it's, it's really Methodist polity that you're talking about right now.
Is it a one-way street?
Yes.
We're paying to them.
Yes.
Are we getting something as?
Well, you have guaranteed, yeah.
To go toward our bills.
Yeah, you get guaranteed appointments of clergy persons, and you're stuck with me.
No, I mean, are we getting financial backing?
Are we receiving financial backing? And in our particular churches, the answer to that is no. But in other churches, the answer to that question is yes. So our ministry shares help to fund churches all around the world. It helps to pay pastors' salaries where churches can't afford to have clergy persons. It pays for education in the world of education. So yes, it does trickle down into, does it translate into dollars in the Bemis Point and Park United Methodist Church's operating budget? The answer is no, not at the current time, because we're financially stable. If we were not financially stable and the ship was sinking, then the conference would pick up salary of clergy, period. And maybe help with the lights.
What, what do we actually know, other than the end of next year, a vote has to come in? How it's going, are, are, did they, did they, the ones that are, with the United Disciplin, did they win?
It's not a win or lose.
They broke us up.
I think the, I think the, the misstep in that is it's not a win or lose, it's a lose-lose. But the answer is, for timeframe, our proposal is that we would vote as a local church by the end of this year. Okay? I'm gonna take a couple of questions that I saw back here. Yeah, Larry, first.
I may have missed this, but, um, if we wanted the Global Methodist Church, how long has it been in operation?
Uh, five months from today. No, yeah, five months from yesterday, actually. Brand new, brand new. Yeah, there was a question, Jan, I think, maybe I saw first.
Well, my question is about, uh, the clergy pensions for the churches that disaffiliate.
Yep, that's a great question. You care about us. What, what happens to the clergy pensions in disaffiliation? The Global Methodist Church has a pension plan already established, and our pensions would roll one hundred percent over into that. If, if, if that's where a clergy person was to go. So depending on the system that a clergy person was to go, those are their resources, they would roll them over into some other plan somewhere else. There was a question up front here, Tom.
Why such a steep supermajority in the vote?
So, uh, that's a great question. The vote is, for a supermajority, just simply means two-thirds. And this is polity stuff, I don't really know the answer to that. But I know that for a church to leave, that it's not a simple majority. And could I just be frank in saying that as a church, we wouldn't wanna do that? If we were divided fifty-fifty, that'd be really tough. That'd be really, 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 really hard.
Seventeen percent over that.
The experience, the experience that churches are witnessing is that it's not a marginal vote. It's ninety-five to a hundred percent. That's the experience, that's what I'm hearing of churches that are disaffiliating. It's an, it's a near majority, cause the churches are, even the larger churches. So don't think that we're a, a really large church in this, we're, we're a medium-sized fish in the pond, okay? There are churches of thousands of people who have disaffiliated from the United Methodist Church around the country, okay? And almost, I think it's eighty percent of a, of an annual conference in Texas has disaffiliated. I mean, there's a lot of churches disaffiliating from the United Methodist Church right now. I saw a question over here, I think it was Charlie, maybe.
Two quick questions.
Yeah.
Will, will it be a single vote? Disaffiliation automatically means going with the?
No. So the, I'm sorry, I cut you off. The question, I think, was, will it be a singular vote for disaffiliation and affiliation at the same time? No, it would be two votes. The first would be for disaffiliation, if that motion carried, then we would vote to affiliate, assuming that's the direction that, that's the direction that our leadership team is proposing. So I think that's probably gonna be the direction that we say we're gonna vote on, if that makes sense.
Can you tell us who the, who is the leadership of the Global Methodist Church? Where'd they come from?
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna correct a couple of things in, in your language, just for a minute. Cause I think it's important that we get the language correct moving forward. We are part of the United Methodist Church. There is no word united in the Global Methodist Church. I know it's, it's really confusing at the beginning, but we gotta work really hard to get that right, so that our language can at least be synonymous moving forward. In the Global Methodist Church, in the Global Methodist Church, uh, there's already been, um, the election of officers, so of bishops, will take place at the convening conference, which is slated for 2024. So they'll be elected in 2024. There's a couple of bishops who are helping to oversee in the interim already, but then they'll be elected based on jurisdictions. And the way that works is where the pockets of churches are would be considered a jurisdiction. So like kinda when you look at the Verizon map and you see all those red dots, well, depending on where the churches were, would, they would form a jurisdiction that made sense geographically. And the bishop would preside and oversee that jurisdiction. We can anticipate ourselves being lumped in with a good portion of Pennsylvania and Ohio.
Who's actually, is it the world church or the United Methodist Institute? Vote for the disaffiliation. Who's actually heading up?
There is nobody heading up disaffiliation, except for the local church.
Is it, is it, and who's pastors that are not in conforming to the rules? Are they part of?
They are part of the United Methodist Church. Part of our current system. I'm gonna come back here, and then Connie, I'll come over to you. Oh, yeah, actually, right, yep, yep.
Um, a question is, I think you sort of answered it. Like, what should we, the Global Methodist Church? What, what is the transition? The global need to be there?
That's a great question. So we have to go before, yep. The question was, what's the timeframe for affiliation, basically? There's a few steps in the process. We have to go before annual conference, which is Upper New York, and they have to vote to approve us to leave, to disaffiliate. We have been told by the trustees and our bit, well, our current bishop, that no church will be denied disaffiliation. That works through the process. But it's literally as soon as they're ready to do that, after that date. So it could be, and Bishop Webb has put on the calendar two special sessions of annual conference to only navigate disaffiliation, because there is a flood of disaffiliation requests that have come in over the last month. The first one is in March, then our regularly scheduled annual conference in June, and then a special session again in October of next year. The timeframe of things is very important. The paragraph in the Book of Discipline is only good until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. If a church does, has not been moved through the process of disaffiliation by then, that paragraph goes away, and there is not an avenue for disaffiliation after that, unless General Conference in 2024 elects to do so again. Does that make sense? That is not, I, I'm, I'm trying hard to, you should look at what other bishops in the United Methodist denomination are doing. It's very sad. They're making it impossible for local, they're, they're telling churches they can't leave. And they're creating a really toxic system. There's churches in Florida, there's a hundred and sixty-eight churches, or a hundred and sixty-three churches or something, that have filed lawsuits against the, the Florida Annual Conference to disaffiliate, because the bishop has said they aren't allowed to disaffiliate. I mean, it's, it's very sad.
Well, my question is.
Tom.
If the bishop is retiring on December thirty-first, what assures the people that a bishop won't be placed like this Florida bishop? That could short church and everything, not follow the will of current trustees?
Yeah.
They cheat at every turn, they cheated repeatedly.
Yeah, I wanna be, I wanna be, yep. I wanna be cautious with the language, but I wanna repeat the question. Uh, what happens if we get a bishop after Mark Webb, who's retiring December thirty-first? A new bishop will be appointed on November fourth, I think it is. I think this is an okay way to say this, and please don't feel, please correct me if I'm wrong in this, okay, in my, my statements. But Bishop Webb has said he's, he's kind of the remaining. He's the last of the conservative Orthodox bishops in the United Methodist Church. He's made those statements publicly. Everybody else is centrist and then further progressive than, and, and how they are processing forward. And Tom's question was, what happens if an incoming bishop on January first says, well, all of a sudden, there's a moratorium on whatever was scheduled?
Should it sound like that's what's gonna happen?
That's not a question that I can answer. I, I don't know the answer to the question, Tom. I would really encourage the church to pray faithfully right now, that a bishop would act in, in faith and in accordance with the Book of Discipline, and that they would be faithful to that. Obviously, we would have options, we could file lawsuits, and we would, that's, that's the steps that would be taken. One of our reasoning for wanting to move forward in 2022 in December was so that we have a plan in place before a bishop transition happens, so that we can at least have it known publicly that this is where we're going or what we are doing. And other churches are moving with that same mentality of, we gotta get this on the books as happening by the end of the year. And then if we needed to process with litigation, we would do that.
Which, which would bankrupt the local church.
Which could potentially bankrupt the local churches.
So I guess my, that my question would be, then why are we moving so slowly?
Well, we don't have an option to move faster. That's the bottom line.
In other words, they gave the system and set it up so that they can keep looking at Jesus.
It, that's, um, that's difficult, that's very hard language, and I'd rather not use that language. But it appears that there are definitely some real struggles. And, and churches are attempting to be faithful. And as your leader, that's all that we're going to do, is to be faithful. I took a leadership lesson from Bishop Webb, I'm a man of integrity. That's why, oh, Cameron's not here right now, but that's why we have to pay the disaffiliation costs upfront. That's why we're not gonna engage in some of the other rhetoric, because we're gonna be people of integrity. That, that wins the day in the end. There was another question I saw in the back, Larry and then Connie, okay?
Are you familiar with any pastors that you talk or have ever had a company that wants to stay in the United Methodist Church?
Am I familiar with clergy persons, not necessarily churches? Clergy persons who wanna stay in the United, yeah. I'll, I'll give you one. One of, uh, my good friends, he's an accountability partner of mine. When I talk about my covenant group, uh, the Bible Maws, we were out last week. One of them is not disaffiliating. So yeah, I absolutely do know clergy persons that are not disaffiliating. They're, uh, Connie, I think, there you are, sorry.
What is the Global Methodist Church's process for accountability?
I'm sorry, one more time?
It's the Global Methodist Church's process for accountability, you mentioned about hundreds, someone, hundreds?
Yeah, what is the Global Methodist Church's, uh, system for accountability? So the way we are currently structured is that clergy hold clergy accountable. So, uh, we'll use real time. If Brandon were to engage in acts that were in violation to our Book of Discipline, I would file formal charges, and there would be a church lawsuit filed against Brandon, and there would be a trial. Evidence would be taken, he would be tried, and then he would be either acquitted or punished. That's not the best, that's not all legal language, but you get the point, I think. He'd either be guilty or innocent. Does that make sense? But the, the, the big change is that it's denominationally wide, not just local geographic areas. Right now, the, the tension spot is that right now, our jurisdictional settings are what hold the bishops accountable inside of that jurisdiction. And, um, people of like-mindedness are in the same area. Is how it's been kinda structured, and it's a voting process. Bishops are elected, so you elect, it's very similar to our governmental system, friends, with how people are voted for and, and how they move around. with how people are voted for and, and how they move around. There was another, it's, it's 7:30, I want to pull the body real quick. It seems like we still have some more questions. Do we want to just keep going and we'll, we'll cut it off at eight o'clock if we get to eight o'clock or earlier? Or do you want to take a little break and keep going? Keep going? Okay, well, use the restroom if you need to. Out the doors to the left. Genie.
Okay, I might be confused. We may have answered this already, but we do have four kind of fees that we're paying to the United Methodist right now. Are we going to have fees that we're going to be paying to the global?
Yes, is the answer to that question. That would be capped at six and a half percent as opposed to the 14.3% that we're currently witnessing in the United Methodist Church.
How long does that last? The world church gets too heavy on the top, they go up fees?
Well, that would be, that would be, that's a great question, but that would be up to the General Conference to determine. The question, the question was, well, at what point, what if the world church gets too heavy on the top and then the fee's got to go up essentially, right? That's not the spirit of the discipline as it currently reads. One of the main things, like I said earlier, is there will not be ownership of seminaries. So that's a huge expense. And hospitals is another huge expense. It won't, we won't have those expenses in the boards and agencies that govern things and kind of oversee things. Those aren't even for, they're not even a thought. So. So the United Methodist Church owns hospitals. Maybe you're not aware of that, but a lot of hospitals were originally started by churches and owned by the churches. Think of it, UPMC is, is a Presbyterian-owned St. Vincent's? Yeah, I mean, a lot of them around the world. Other, other, other questions?
So the people that are against it, what do they do? We're voting to disaffiliate. People that want the rules, Ben, what do they do?
Well, they've.
If they belong to this Methodist thing like we do now, what are they doing? Or what is their?
They're working on litigation and they're working on.
Doing to, to discipline.
Well, we can't do anything for discipline, that's the problem. So the question was, what are we doing with those? Well, that's, that's kind of why we're to where we are. So the question was, why aren't people being disciplined who are violating the Book of Discipline? We can't discipline them because of the system structure right now. I don't like that language of win and lose. It really.
They still belong and we can't discipline them.
There is not mutual accountability. Okay? Any other questions? It seems like maybe our questions, I want to check my phone, just make sure nobody texted me questions. Doesn't appear that that's the case, at least not now. As questions come up, if I have failed to answer a question that you asked previously, although I tried my best to write down every question that was put at me and record it and then answer it specifically, but if there are other questions that come up, please do not stop the dialogue. And each one of these town hall meetings, I'm going to share the same narrative at the front end and answer the same questions that have been given to me. If someone gives new questions tomorrow or tonight, then those will get added to the list and they'll get answered. But I, Chuck has a question. He, he knew I was, I'm getting ready to land the plane, the wings are getting copped.
That just came up.
Yep.
Obviously, the system is tainted and I don't know all the reasons I can just lean what I've heard to not swallow the denomination right now.
Yep.
Do you feel like the integrity is strong enough that they would constantly work on some stop gates or whatever it would use to prevent this from happening again? And the reason I say that is the pressure that might come because we're Christians, we follow, and we know that it's happening.
So let's, that's a great question. I'm going to answer that question, but I want that to be the last one. So are there other questions before I give this one an answer? What Chuck is asking is the church has had these problems from its inception. We read about them and taught about them today in the church in Ephesus with Paul's letters to Timothy. This is not new. The spirit of the people who are leading the way with the Global Methodist Church is to have a structure of accountability that prevents this from happening. By God's grace is the only way and we must remain faithful to the Scriptures. It has to have the final authority. So if I could just give you a quick Wesleyan lesson, I'll be very brief. There's what's known as the Wesleyan quadrilateral. There are four unique pieces to us as Wesleyans. One of them is the authority of Scripture. One of them is our reason. So it's important to be in study, reason. One of them is experience. So, and the last one is tradition. And what's happened is we've thought they were equal parts of a quadrilateral, right? So each one got a quarter. And that's actually not the case. Wesley never intended that. He actually didn't talk about the quadrilateral. We just see these unique things to people known as Wesleyans, right? Our experience of how we meet God can vary based on person to person. But the moment it deviates from Scripture, then a true Wesleyan says, timeout, you're out of bounds. Because Scripture actually is the baseline for those other three pieces. It actually would look like Scripture, tradition, reason, and experience. But we haven't made it that way. True Wesleyans believe in the authority of Scripture as the baseline. We believe that God doesn't love us enough to leave us in our state of sin, whatever that sin may be, right? If we struggle with being a gossip, God will not leave you in the state of being a gossip. He desires to purify you from all ungodliness. Or as he told Timothy today, to be holy. And he does that by the work of the Holy Spirit, purifying us from the inside out. A key piece to the people known as Wesleyans is that we believe in personal holiness, which leads to social holiness and social change. When we live as followers of Jesus that are committed in the cause, we're all in, right? Lord, you get every aspect of my life. It changes the world around you. All of a sudden, businesses start to look differently, right? All of a sudden, governmental agencies that you're part of start to look differently because we process and we move forward with integrity in all settings. We have a deep longing to care for the orphan and the widow, to care for the least and the lost. I'm getting a little bit preachy, but anyway, the Wesleyan quadrilateral, the baseline for all of that is Scripture. And the moment something bumps outside of Scripture, we have to say, timeout, you're out of bounds. Let's reset. We haven't done that real well because there's been hurt on the other side. And we've done it with judgments. We've been judgmental in the process where we've just called to make judgments, not to be judgmental, right? There is one judge. We are just little undersheriffs at times. Anyway, hopefully that answered your question, Chuck. By God's grace, we would be a purified church and only by God's grace. But as Paul charged Timothy, guard your doctrine closely. Guard your doctrine very closely. Bob?
Thank you for putting us together and I thank you for being strong, positive. You understand Paul, the evangelist, the preacher, the preacher?
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to pray for us and then we'll close out our formal time. And if you have other questions, I don't have to go anywhere tonight. I'm here all night, I can be, so let's just linger a little longer if we need to, but let's pray. Father, thank you for your church. God forgive us where we have sinned against you and where we've been rebels. Purify us, Lord. God, give your church wisdom and discernment in the days ahead. Lord, you know my heart and the heart of the, the people that are gathered. We don't want to do harm. We don't want to hurt people. We just want to be faithful to you. So Jesus, help us. Help us to do that by your Holy Spirit's work in our lives right now. We ask these things in your name, Lord. Amen. Friends, thank you for coming and I'll be at Park Church tomorrow night at six o'clock. If you have other questions, I can linger a little bit longer.